Good evening, everyone. This is the Budget Committee for the Everett School Committee. This is Thursday, March 16th, 2023. If I could have everyone please join me in saluting the flag. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, for letting me know. Mr. O'Connor, first row call.
Ms. Sarni. Mr. Barrows.
Here.
Ms. Cardelo.
Here.
Mr. Monica. Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Ms. Christiano.
Present.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Chairman Mangan.
Present.
Nine members present.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Please join me in saluting the flag.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Superintendent, I don't know if you have an agenda there. Could just read the... Mr. O'Connor, do you have the agenda? Just for... Professors, could you just... Someone read the item?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the agenda item tonight is a discussion of the proposed fiscal year '24 budget for the Everett Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. If we could have a motion in a second to bring... Allow Superintendent Teilianni and Assistant Superintendent Anu Janath to do a presentation for us.
So move it, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Superintendent?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. The FY '24 budget season began several months ago as Assistant Superintendent of Finance Anu Janath and her team held meetings with building leaders, directors, department heads, and central administration. The budget is designed to meet the needs of our students while fulfilling our obligations to the taxpayers of Everett and the Commonwealth. It is an awesome responsibility that our budget team manages with skill, precision, and transparency. Tonight's presentation is the product of countless hours of collaboration amongst EPS leaders and educators. The asks are rooted in rationale and driven by the best interests of our students and staff. Like last year, we are not asking for any money above net school spending. Instead, we are once again asking the city to make a commitment to our students in the form of space. It seems the plan at this point is modular, and we look forward to receiving and enacting that plan. That being said, everything and anything should be on the table. We have set aside funds in this budget in the case that we're able to find space we can lease within the city, which is something we on the leadership team have been exploring the last month as we eagerly await next steps from the city and as we try to plan ahead for next school year, which is just around the corner. With that said, our proposed FY '24 budget continues to push ahead on other initiatives and efforts that are critical to student success, not to mention or key to addressing the wishes of the school committee. Fortunately, we greatly benefit from the state program called the Student Opportunity Act, or SOA. These resources help close, and I quote, "gaps, experiences, and outcomes across racial and ethnic groups, and economically disadvantaged communities compared to higher-income communities, for students with disabilities relative to their non-disabled peers, and for English learners compared to students whose first language is English." We feel fortunate that the SOA is being funded fully for the first time. My sincerest thanks to the state legislators who worked so hard to rectify what had been an increasingly unfair budget situation for communities like ours. Without SOA, the EPS would be in a far less advantageous position than it is today, and I am proud of the fact that the EPS budget reflects the goals and spirit of SOA. The FY '24 budget has three priorities: cleanliness, safety, and social emotional wellness. Specifically, we want to hire a team of social workers to support students, families, staff, alongside the Elliott clinicians in all of our schools. Additionally, we will expand on the great work we have done in the realms of cleanliness and safety. As with everything, we can do more to install systems and services that maximize efficiencies and achieve the results in these areas that you have asked us to emphasize. With that, I would respectfully turn it over to Ms. Janath.
May I motion to bring Ms. Janath?
We have a motion, second, to bring Ms. Janath forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Janath? Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Mangan, School Committee members, and everyone else watching tonight. I am honored to be presenting the FY '24 budget proposal for the Everett Public Schools. I would like to begin with the basics of our budget numbers. For FY '24, we have received a total EPS operating budget of $124,792 after paying for chargebacks.
Ms. Janath? One second. I apologize for interrupting. Is everyone... Mr. Marcus is saying that he can't hear.
I can't hear. Maybe the microphones.
Hello? Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Plus, a special education transportation budget of $4,604,462. That gives us a total FY '24 budget of $128,612,364. Our budgets have increased over the past five years, from just under $98 million in FY '19 to more than $128 million in FY '24. Required local contributions have increased to a modest degree, while state funding, known as Chapter 70, has really jumped in recent years. This reiterates the superintendent's point that SOA is really helping. This slide breaks down the components of our FY '24 budget. Chapter 70 makes up most of the pie at $111,682,212. The city's minimum requirement, as determined by the state, is $40,961,068. Then we deduct more than $28 million for City Hall chargebacks, bringing us to our FY '24 total budget of $124,007,902. That figure excludes the special education transportation. This slide provides a direct comparison between FY '23 and FY '24. Chapter 70 funds jumped by 21%, or more than $19 million. Required local contribution grew by 7% from under $39 million to more than $40 million. Chargebacks, which is the money we pay back to the city, is up 4%. The district's net school spending budget after chargeback is up 20% this year, from $103 million to $124. As I mentioned, chargebacks are the upfront cost we pay to the city. The largest cost here are benefits, primarily our health insurance costs for our employees. Other items that are included in chargebacks are salaries for school nurses and portions of salaries for city employees who work on school-related items like payroll and procurement. This pie chart illustrates a budget breakdown on a percentage basis. Salaries are, as ever, our biggest budget driver, at 57.8%. The biggest percentage after that, from highest to lowest, is chargebacks, non-personnel, maintenance, out-of-district tuition, and special education. School-based personnel account for 87.9% of our salary expenses. 9.9% of our salaries go to system-wide educators and employees, who are employees that are placed in a system-wide department but deployed to schools. An example of this are our family liaisons and custodians. The final 2.3% pays for the central office staff. Our budget process has changed dramatically and for the better over the past three years. An essential part of the evolution is aligning our reporting to DESI end-of-year reporting and best practices as we transition to our new Munis HR system. That means the budget presentation here before you has some technical changes, three of which I want to highlight here since you will see these changes on specific lines. One, as required, we changed two codes to align with the DESI end-of-year report. To use an example, the district previously used code 2310 for specialist teachers and 2250 for technology teachers. Those two positions have been updated to the DESI code 2305. Two, we now report longevity as one line in our system-wide budget section. This change will support our transition to Munis and its more transparent. Previously, longevity was included in the individual's staff salary lines. I might reference these changes as the presentation moves along in explaining specific budget lines. Bringing this conversation back to our three main priorities for the new budget, and starting with cleanliness. We are proposing four things that will contribute to our ongoing and tireless efforts to keep our buildings as clean as possible. One, we're budgeting for overnight crews for all our schools. Last year, the committee approved bringing back a vendor to clean Everett High School overnight. It has been a success, so much so that we want to extend this practice district-wide. This will not impact the number of custodians we employ. Custodians are the heart of the effort. They're critical members of our school staff, and they'll work whenever students and/or staff are in the buildings. The contractors will complete deep cleaning on a regimented schedule when our schools are empty. Obviously, it is infinitely easier to thoroughly clean an empty school than a crowded one. We reached this determination after months of close scrutiny and great deliberation. Deputy Superintendent Kim Tsai has led this work, which has included regular Saturday morning tours of all our buildings, replete with detailed findings and photographs. We're convinced we need greater contracted service from professionals who have the equipment and personnel to clean our buildings and to be answerable to the EPS. By doing this, we will have an almost around-the-clock cleaning operation at a reasonable cost. Secondly, we're seeking to invest in a groundskeeper to maintain the exterior of our schools, which are important not only to our students, staff, and families, but taxpayers as well. This addition will actually reduce our landscaping budget as we currently contract this out. Thirdly, as recommended in the operational audit the school committee commissioned, we will have an in-house repair technician on hand to cope with maintenance issues that pop up on a regular basis but are not necessarily easy, easily, and quickly handled by our custodial staff. This might include changing or replacing locks, fixing doors, repairing holes in the walls, or performing preventive maintenance that saves the district money in the long haul. To use the locks as an example, currently we're charged a minimum flat fee for all service calls without the guarantee of an immediate response to what is a fundamental safety concern. In addition, Ms. Tsai's work has uncovered shortcomings in the district's ability to make routine repairs that ensure we're up to code and that our spaces are safe as possible. We need to be more nimble. A repair technician will help achieve that. Lastly, to bring the district in compliance with state and federal CTE statutes, we will hire drivers to bring students to and from internships and off-site programming during the school day. This is related to cleanliness, as the longstanding practice in the EPS has been to have custodians drive to and from internships, which take them away from their daily duties. Together, these proposals enable the EPS to build and expand on the progress we have made in addressing cleanliness at all our schools. Based on your overwhelmingly positive reaction to the safety and security update we provided on March 6th, it is clear that we're making big strides on this front. But as with everything, we want to explore areas in which we can do more or do better, as is evident in this budget. On the personnel front, we plan to hire a security manager to report to Director Lauren O'Connor to make sure we're implementing and expanding best practices across every school in the district. We met with our Director of Security, Lauren, to review a thorough plan around enhancing safety at all our schools. We will use funds to purchase lockdown kits for classrooms, as well as vaping detectors in the bathrooms at the high school and the K-8 buildings. This is in addition to funding that ensures our cameras, technology, and our platforms are functioning up to date and fully meeting our needs. We are also exploring the possibility of leasing space in Everett to help alleviate overcrowding and to address the associated safety risks with overcrowding. This is in the exploratory stage, but we want to have the funds in our budget to take advantage of any opportunities that might arise. We should be open to all potential solutions, even partial ones and even ones that are outside the box. The desire and need for social workers quickly emerged as a top priority during our budget discussions. As a result, we're looking to hire 21 licensed social workers to support students and families in all our schools. This will not impact our relationship with Elliott Human Services, which provides one-on-one counseling to students based on referrals from teachers, administrators, and guidance counselors. School social workers will be an additive measure designed to help the EPS provide comprehensive social work services to parents, guardians, and school staff district-wide, and school adjustment counseling services to high school students. In a perfect scenario, we will have multiple social workers in each building so they can support each other as well as their schools. Additionally, social workers will address barriers that might be preventing a student from fully benefiting from the educational experience. In sum, we envision these professionals as being critical to all the work we do every day. So EPS social workers will, or could be asked, to be a member of student support teams, participate in LST, IEP, and 504 meetings, provide family intervention, and consult and collaborate with students, families, and outside agencies, school programs, school staff, to address situations in need of social services; assist families with receiving wraparound support from community agencies to include home visits as needed; interpret educational and medical evaluations, conduct home assessments and consultation as needed; participate in professional development and help development training for staff and families... participate in professional development and development training for staff and families; and promote proactive, responsive, and clear communication with stakeholders while maintaining More than all of that, EPS social workers will be professional members of our school communities who will provide direct support to students, and by extension, much-needed assistance to teachers and staff who are asked to balance so much at once. Social workers will also be invaluable in helping students cope with sudden or unexpected circumstances, such as a family tragedy or a return to school from a prolonged absence. Social workers are also able to provide crisis intervention in cases where events necessitate community gatherings and/or large-scale support. It is important to draw a distinction between school social workers and guidance counselors, which you made a significant investment in last year. We believe the addition of school social workers will help guidance counselors focus on their areas of expertise, including academic planning and counseling, attendance support and peer mediation, conflict resolution, and college and career planning. Those duties stand apart from what our school social workers will be asked to do. As you know, our enrollment is on the rise. We currently have more than 7,400 students in the EPS, and projections call for that to climb to more than 7,700 over the next three years. Excuse me. As we have discussed in the past, our enrollment has already surpassed the point that negatively impacts programming and operations. The above projections come from Open Architects. DESI's 2026 projections are even higher, though that does include charter school projections as well. The fact remains that independent sources show that our enrollment will continue to increase. We use these projections as a guide to our budget and staffing decisions, which we can move on to next. Before we move on to the line item budget, I'll stop here if anyone has any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Giant. Do you have the number for the DESI projection? You mentioned that it's even higher than these numbers.
Yes, it's actually in the binder, if you look at... So the first page is our Open Architects enrollment projections, which is this page right here. And then if you go down to the FY24 budget table here, the number here, which is the 7,937...
Yep, that's the DESI.
That's the DESI number.
Okay.
Ms. Lambert.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if this is for Assistant Superintendent Giant or Superintendent Tahiani, but how will... So, looking at the increase in the safety and security budget, is there a plan for... Because I would hope that the additional social workers will actually reduce the need for additional investments in security, you know, when we look at behaviors as forms of communication and all of the studies that have shown us that social workers actually make schools a safer place. So are you looking at that in conjunction? Or... And I can save the question for any of our directors.
So, and I think we'll be talking about this a little bit more in the line-by-line budget, too. However, what we were thinking of is also making sure that we have some coverage at our K-8 schools, since we have a security director, and a lot of our security services are focused right here at the high school. So we wanted to expand. The hope is definitely that social workers will end up being preventative and will lead to less concerns, but a lot of the security concerns that we're thinking of are really more from the outside in and not from the inside out.
And if possible, just as a recommendation, and so more for you, if we could utilize the social workers as we design security processes to make sure that they're not causing unintended consequences, I think would be helpful, because there are... You know, your environment does dictate a lot of your day and your ability to learn. So I think that would be helpful to look at those, because I think psychological safety is a big component of safety overall, and making sure that our students feel safe is important, but also that they... That they don't feel like they're the problem is essentially where I'm going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Ms. Cardell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one question. I bet you the superintendent or whoever prefers to answer, and it's going back a couple of pages to groundskeeper. The groundskeeper, you said we now contract companies to come in and do that. So are we looking to put our own unit of groundskeepers on staff, so that it'd be like EPS employees? Okay, thank you. That's all.
Should I go on?
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Christiano.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Superintendent, I'm sure you have done a cost comparison with respect to hiring a groundskeeper. We're not going to do away with the landscaping contract.
So we do have, when we get to the line item budget, you'll see, we have reduced it. So we haven't gotten rid of it entirely, no. But it would reduce the cost that we're putting towards contracting it out, because as we get somebody in-house, that person would be doing more of the... But we'd still need to contract out some parts of it or add to the supply budget, things like that.
Thank you.
And to add to that, too, as part of the process, when Ms. Giant meets with all the directors, department heads, almost everything you're going to see was a suggestion from the person who is on the ground directing that team. So that was a recommendation. We do have a director of facilities, again, to be more cost-effective, but also to be more efficient. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Chairman, through you, superintendent or assistant superintendent, the student enrollment number is different between DESI...
Our number is the amongst students that are actually in our buildings. Right, so the additional DESI number...
Microphone?
Sorry. It is on. No, I'm going to just move it, just move it. So the additional students are students that are out of district.
For the most part, yes, but they also have a different methodology for their enrollment projections. So it is not only students who are outside, they also have a different method. We have an internal system that takes into account birth rates and things like that. Their system is a little bit different. So the number, the difference, is reflective not only of students who may be in charter schools, but also of this, just their own system that's different from ours.
But so...
In general, the DESI number actually tends to undercount, whereas we overcount. That has been sort of an issue historically, is that, you know, and I'm sure you hear from school districts, is that we have other school districts that we have more students than DESI accounts for. So generally, the DESI enrollment projection is actually an undercount of where we are. But again, it's hard to compare apples to apples here, because it's not. It's their enrollment projection for us, who, how many students they think we're going to have, plus the number of students who'll be going out of district from Everett.
Because at one point, there was some one that used a free lunch form, something that had a certain count of students, but it's no longer, or some other code, but it's no longer that way to come to it. But that's what I was getting, because DESI better give us credit for the amount of...
Do you want to? Yeah, yeah, that is correct. So they used to use the reduced lunch, I mean, sorry, the free lunch threshold before, which was a higher bar to reach, and right now, they've taken it to the reduced lunch threshold. So yes, so they've finessed their methodology a little bit in that sense, so they'll be able to more accurately account for the enrollment. The numbers that we use, as we continuously try to finesse our own numbers to make sure we can get it as accurate as possible, one change was that we moved to... So DESI uses the October 1st... I apologize, I'm going to keep having coughing fits today, but they use the October 1st SIMS data to calculate enrollment. What we've seen in Everett is that our enrollment tends to jump a lot in January, because that's when we get a lot of families specifically from Brazil that come in. So we've been trying to use the January enrollment data to project our enrollment.
So one of these clothes, is what do you think, most accurate, most... DESI's never around.
I would think our number.
Our number. Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else, Ms. Giant, if you want to continue.
Before we dive into line items and eventually school-based budgets, I want to reiterate that these numbers and dollar amounts are the results of a formal budget process. We first ask department heads, directors, and building leadership to make their initial requests in writing with rationales. Then we have a series of meetings with educators and the budget team. Then we meet as a leadership team to determine what we can and cannot fund. We can now turn to the line-by-line budget. I'll try to answer all your questions, but please jump in as needed. We start with school administration. Our school administration budget is increasing by 31%, largely due to the addition of a projected cost for the Munis financial software. We're looking at an April go-live date for our Munis HR system, but looking ahead, we hope to include the financial portion as well, which will make it an integrated HR and financial platform, which is what both the 2019 task force and the recently concluded operational audit have mentioned as the much-needed next step towards financial and payroll accuracy, efficiency, and transparency.
Ms. Giant, Mr. McLaughlin has a question.
Not sure.
Works now.
Really? I'm sorry.
Try again, Nick. You could talk louder.
I apologize that I'm not sure that I'm on the right page as far as district school expense. Okay, I'm going to hold off then on my question. I'm going to go on to this thing.
Ms. Sani.
Thank you. On a couple of items, on the central office salaries, the assistant superintendent salaries, they went lower from 23. Are you having eliminated some assistant superintendents?
I think we had... I mean, my position was titled, obviously, differently, but I think in that line item, we had at the time had the three positions listed.
Okay. And then on the human resource salary, it jumped up. Is that multiple employees on that salary as well for, from 201 to 269?
Yes, so we had, in last year's budget, we had included an HR specialist. We have the HR director and HR specialist, and then in this year's budget, we are putting a request in for a payroll specialist position. So it's a total of three.
Okay. And then you have a new position for a project strategic planning... And what kind of projects they will be doing?
So that position will be mainly focused around our key performance indicators and our benchmarks. We really have not had anybody who's been able to kind of support the internal design system developments, all our processes around compliance. So this is a position that we do have a draft job description that we can share as well, but the key duty of this position is going to be around our key performance indicators and compliance systems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, somebody was reforming.
So what I might suggest is we stop at the end of every, like, small section, because you talk about the new position. So every time we talk about the new positions and then ask the questions, because I think we're getting ahead a few slides, so we'll stop every few slides, if that's okay. So is that right? Because we explain some of the...
Thank you.
...positions in every few sections.
Okay, I was just going to ask him on the... Either that, or I couldn't hear anyone. The manager of special projects and strategic planning.
That was just asked.
And I didn't, I couldn't hear, must be. I couldn't hear it. I'm having trouble with my hearing.
I'm sorry. Before you speak, Mr. Marcus, if you would like to, if you want, you can go down to Mr. Lamonic's chair down there, maybe? I mean, just to be on the safe side.
All right, maybe I can hear better.
Because I don't know when you can and can't hear.
I'm going to get a hearing aid.
Please do.
All right, Ms. Giant, please continue.
Yes, so for each department, the slides go by the budget first and then the personnel slide. So yes, if you want to ask questions on the personnel, we definitely come to that next.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin has a question.
Thank you. On school administration budget that we see this year, the presentation, business office, contract services, for $501,800 is a new line item. There was nothing appropriated last year. Are we... What contract services?
Yes, so that is the Munis financial system that I had just talked about. So we are actually going live with the HR system in April. So we are putting aside $500,000 for next year, for next year, with the hope that we can then phase in the financial piece of Munis, so that we have one integrated HR financial system.
Okay, so this came... Okay. Okay, thank you.
Please continue, I apologize.
And we are doing it in partnership with the city. So the go-live date for the HR system is with the city in April, and then we're hoping to move to financials after that. Continuing with the school administration budget, this slide shows a significant increase in legal services listed on, which is listed under the school committee line. This is rising from $200,000 to $690,000 due to work that's being done on current active cases that I'm not at liberty to discuss, but that's kind of the increase on that line that you can see. Our final slide for school administration shows that our final projection is $3.7 million, which is a 31% increase.
Anybody have any questions on these school administration, all up to the, where it says grand total? Any questions? Okay. Okay, continue, please. Ms. Giant.
This slide looks at school administration, so the same department, but school administration personnel, from the superintendent's office to the budget team. We're increasing the staff by two, so from 19 to 21, and the two positions are a manager of strategic planning and a payroll specialist. The system-wide budget has a projected budget of $28.3 million, a 44% increase from FY23. The system-wide budget includes all school-based costs budgeted in a system-wide department. This includes all our K-8 coordinators, curriculum and instruction, athletic and club stipends, and our special ed clinical services. Just to call out a few lines here, the DASICS program is a program that helps reengage students who have dropped out of high school to make up credits they still need to and to help get their GED and MCAS prep. The health program is another one, and these are all continuations from last year, but were ones that we had used S or other grant funding for before. The homeless student support line is budgeted for us to continue our partnership with Youth Harbor, who helps us connect homeless students with shelters. This was previously budgeted under a private grant that has since ended.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Giant, technology manager, I think I know the question, but we had the position last year, we just didn't fill the position, and we're now going to fill the position in the coming budget. Is that... I'm just trying to follow.
So we just, yeah, we just hired Mr. Chavo as our technology manager, but yes, it was a position that was budgeted last year.
It was budgeted, but unfilled, and now we're going to fill the position.
We just filled it.
Oh, we just filled the position. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Giant, I have a question on the, starting with athletics. So a pretty big jump in supplies from 408 to 592. If you could just explain that? Yeah, I thought she just did, I thought she was talking about that.
Yeah, some of those costs include a new, like, a new software that Ms. Turner has been looking at. So these were all done in partnership with the department head. So for the athletics budget, we did meet with Ms. Turner to go over the needs of the department for next year. So one of the things that has been included, off the top of my head that I can remember, is it's called... Okay, I forget what it's called, but it's a software that helps students kind of map out their courses and course requirements, athletes... Athletes, it's called Honest Game, and also helps them prep for, you know, for college and any college sports that they may want to play. So that's one thing that has been included in there. The other thing is, we just partnered with Arbiter Pay to pay our referees and non-EPS employees who serve as timekeepers, referees. So that cost has been included as well. Instead of it paying, getting paid through our payroll, it's a third party that kind of helps manage that, so that we're consistent in how we're paying our referees and scorekeepers.
Thank you. I just, a comment too also, just, I'm glad to see it really, because in the band, both the music and instruments and the transportation has gone up significantly. And I think our award-winning band deserves that. So I just want to thank you for recognizing that and certainly upping that budget in those particular items significantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just to, just to stay on that for a minute, a lot of the things that come out of the budget end up being unbudgeted items that we've seen over the past two years. So this year has been a really comprehensive look. So taking music as an example, making sure that we are looking at all the competitions that the band goes on every year consistently and making sure that we're fully funding it. Because it is great to always, to depend on sometimes to, you know, get earmarks from the state and other, like, fundraising opportunities, but it's also more sustainable if we make sure that we're fully funding something that we know students are taking part in.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert?
So on the athletics, I know one of the things that has come up is uniforms. So is it possible, just to make sure that this includes, especially for freshman teams, you know, just as they're representing us, as they go out, making sure that they have new uniforms? And because that is an entry point into our athletics program for a lot of our students? I don't know if we have more details on.
Yes, so as part of this, with Ms. Turner, we've been working on trying to make sure we have a rotation schedule for uniforms for every sport, as well as a complete holistic list of supply and equipment needs for every sport, including for our skills and drills and our PE program, so that we can, you know, revisit that every year and make sure we're adhering to some kind of rotation schedule, even if we can afford only, like, five sports or six sports this year, then making sure next year it's equitable and we're moving on to the next.
And then just one other question, and this actually came from a student this week. I see there's a big increase in curriculum, and I know we're doing a curriculum review, but, and it's been a big ask from high school students, is if we can look into financial literacy curriculum that is accessible to all of our students? And so I'm happy to forward it. I just received it last night. But she put together actually a curriculum plan for financial literacy. So I just wanted to put that out there, but I love the investment in new curriculum.
Absolutely.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you. The, under athletics, athletic salaries, I see, is jumped up pretty significantly. What is the increase?
So if we actually move to the next slide, Mr. McLaughlin, we will talk about the personnel needs in there, and it'll, I can highlight over there what this position increases for.
And then, okay, we'll go to the next slide, and then we can go from there. Sure.
Do you have any questions? Oh, Ms. Sani?
Thank you. I believe it's probably moved into a different category, is the English learners, EL coordinators. Did that move into another category?
So those positions actually, we've actually moved them to the, to the schools. So they'll show up on the school.
Okay. Just, just to prepare, so if we, when you present this to the council, so they would know, you know, let them know ahead of time that
What the changes?
The changes were that they move, because I, you know, I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking they probably would send a specialist teacher. So I'm just, you know, just to prepare ourselves.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Christiano?
Just had a quick question, and maybe I missed it, and I apologize for that. The curriculum stipends, what's that all about?
So that's as part of our review schedule. So we try to reinvest in our own teachers when we're doing our curriculum reviews. And so those are stipends that we pay to our own teachers. We always post them and make sure that they are part of the process.
Sounds great.
All right, seeing no more, excuse me, no more questions. Under these two pages, Madam Superintendent, Ms. Giannou, if we can move on to, I guess it's system-wide budget continued? Next page. Starts with Day Six program.
I think I went, did I already go over this? No.
So I think we're on the one that starts with security.
No, it should say Day Six program, if I'm not mistaken, up top. I didn't, I didn't hear her talk about it. No, I didn't hear anything about, about equity office, family liaison, furniture, none of that stuff. So, yeah, it says Day Six program, Ms. Giannou, at the top.
Oh, yes, okay. So, yeah, so the Day Six program is a program that helps reengage students who have dropped out of high school to make up credits they still need and to help get their GED and MCAS prep. The health program is also an example of all continuations from last year, but were ones that were used, that we had used Essor or other grant funding for before. The homeless student support line is budgeted for us to continue our partnership with Youth Harbors, who helps us connect homeless students with shelters. This was previously budgeted under a private grant that has since ended.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Giannou, can you just explain the, how in '03, there was zero, for instance, like, the equity manager, and now in '24, it's 85. Can you just explain the ones with the larger increases? Why?
So the equity manager is a new position. So it's not budgeted for this year, but it's a new position. In the next slide, I can highlight the new positions that we are putting in the system-wide budget.
Continue. I'm sorry.
So this is the system-wide budget continuing, and to call out a line here, the intern stipend line is increasing since we plan to build on the success of our EPD EPS student liaison internship program. The system-wide budget continues on the next slide. And one thing to call out here would be the social worker's salary line. That's the budget for the 21 positions that we hope to staff up next year. The last slide of the system budget, system-wide budget, shows you the total projected budget for this department would be the 28.3 million, which is a 44% increase from FY '23.
Any questions on those last couple of pages?
And then?
Again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Giannou, can you explain from?
On to personnel next. Do you mind if I kind of facilitate when we stop for questions? Because, is that okay?
No, I apologize, Madam Superintendent, but the thing is, is that if we get too far ahead, then to keep going back. So I just think if we're going page by page, I don't know, I'm just, just from past experiences.
Only because the next section is personnel. So each section is broken down to budget and then personnel, and then we just, we go over all new positions and what they are. So I was just thinking, once we get to the end of every section where we talk about all new personnel and explain what each of them are, that might be a nice time to stop for questions for all the previous, because I, what, the questions I'm hearing most are about the new personnel. Those are a couple of slides.
Only because, like, so for instance, in here, like, there's things like theater. If somebody has a question on theater or TV program or, or vision hearing, I'm not saying they would, but that has nothing to do with personnel, so that's why I'm saying, that's all.
It's a few.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we go back to the line, the page that says Day Six program? And when you have zero in '23 and an increase in '24, like, for instance, system-wide guidance transportation, can you just explain, or health stipend, or health contract services? Can you just explain why you went from zero in '23 to $23,000 in '24, just so?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so.
If you can do that for the next two pages till we finish. Each one, like, for instance, library contracted services, it was zero, now it's $11,500. I just want to know what we're spending.
So there could be two reasons for that. One reason could be that we are trying to get more transparent in what our line items are. In prior years, some of these items have kind of lumped, been lumped together in one line, and now we want to make sure we're, we're very clear on what we're paying for. Stipends, contracted services, field trips. The other reason could be, something like the Day Six as an example, was something that we were funding elsewhere. So we were funding it out of Essor before, and now we're bringing it into our general fund.
All right. Okay. So can you just, so is that the answer for all those?
That is, yeah, so it's one of.
So we, we did spend money in these line items, but we just never?
Correct.
Was properly accounted for. Okay. So like, system-wide professional development, last year we spent, I'm sure we spent money last year in professional development, but this year you have allocated $224. Did you spend $224 the year prior, or do you not know?
We would have, yes, we would have.
You did spend it.
So professional development, we normally use our Title II funding for.
Okay.
So a large part of last year's budget, this year's budget, sorry, we've been spending it out of Title II. But next year, we're allocating the $224,000 in this, in next year's general fund budget.
And you, it said somewhat longevity earlier. So in '23, it was zero, in '24, now it's 415. So prior budgets, people's longevity was in their salary line item? Now it's taken out, and it's just one larger line item?
Yes, so as we're transitioning to the Munis HR system, one of the things we want to make sure we can do there is automate longevity. So if you have a higher date or service date of X, then automatically we can, the longevity kicks in based on that higher date. This has not been the case right now, so it's been a very manual process. We actually have been, we wait for people to email us to say, oh, I, you know, my longevity kicks in this year. So we don't even have a reporting structure right now to say, these are all the people who get longevity when it started, how much it is. So it's, it's been on each person's individual salary line. So we've had to pull that out to be able to show how much that is, first of all. And then, once we transition to the HR system and get everybody's service dates in there, we hope to be able to automate it so that it can kick in directly back into their salary line.
In the schools, longevity, that's an annual payment for employee, right? Longevity, annual payment?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I was just going to basically ask the same question that the mayor just asked, which, but to you, Ms. Giannou, I don't know if you're able to provide us a later date, not now, of what we actually spent on these line items in the FY '23 appropriation? Because there is, looks like a lot of new things happening, but I know they're not. It's just the way you're reporting it this year. So I'm just wondering if there's, if down the road, you can share with us what you actually spent this year versus what you project to spend next year? I'll yield the floor to the mayor, I know he has his hand up. He was speaking about this first.
Mr. Mayor, and then Ms. Lambert?
I just want to say, I appreciate the way you did it. I appreciate you, you put on a line item and showing us, because in the past, the budgets were never very transparent. So thank you for doing it this way. I appreciate it.
Ms. Lambert?
And just so that our colleagues are aware, for the last three years, we've been talking about the fiscal cliff and echoing the comments of fully funding the year-three phasing of the Student Opportunity Act has significantly helped, because a lot of the programming, I know I was especially concerned about the reengagement programming, as well as, you know, some others, like the Acceleration Academies that we funded through Essor. But that documentation has been available. But just so that the general public understands that throughout COVID, we received, and there's been a lot of talk about that, we received a significant amount of funding. We spoke openly about a fiscal cliff happening in 2024. We are here now. And luckily, you know, through the work of our state legislature, we don't have to cut that programming that we were afraid we were going to if we got to this point, because we know we have more work to do, especially in recovery and academics. And so I think, you know, some of the words may not be familiar to the general public, so I just wanted to clarify. We had that large influx of money. It's, there's been a lot of reporting around it. It has been spent, it's been spent. The federal system is very slow in updating it, but we've had that information available, and it's available to anybody. But a lot of this programming was what we deemed as important and priority coming out of COVID, like, reengagement. And the good thing is, we've realized it works, and it is working, and we're able to continue it.
Thank you for pointing out, Ms. Lambert. Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, too, I know. I know that one of our colleagues here had brought in a lot of money for homeless students before. And now we have, we don't have anything other than our own self-funding of this program? Are there no grants or anything that we can apply for? Or how do we do this? Because $50,000 isn't even enough for as many homeless students that we have.
We do, we do get the McKinney-Vento homeless grant. That is an entitlement grant that we would still get some funding for. But this particular grant, I do have the name of the grant, but it was a private grant that was funding this particular partnership. So since that's going away, we just want to make sure we don't eliminate that program. We want to keep set aside funding for it.
Okay, so we're putting that in there as a just-in-case, because we had that much money before.
Yes, we still plan to go after any grants that we can.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to add to my colleague regarding this program. I'm the one who brought this program to Everett. It's a, it was a pilot program that Everett High was the first high school in the state to have it. Was a grant for the Mahasa, Mahasa and Shelter Alliance. And it's a program, was $30,000 per year. It was a program to help pay for rent for our students who were deemed homeless. And with Youth Harbor, they had access to pretty much assistance for, from that, from the staff of Youth Harbor to make sure that they were not, were not only paying their rent, but they were coming to school. And successfully, all of those, that we were able to assist them with housing, only one did not graduate from Everett High. But sadly, this year, Mahasa said that they might not be able to fund the program. So the school superintendent wants to continue with the program, because it is really unique in the state.
Thank you. Ms. Cardello?
I'm sorry, I did have one more. And that's who I meant when I said one of our colleagues, because I remember that. That was a great thing you did there. System-wide health ed programs went from $10,000 to $20,000. What are we doing to expand this? It's right above the homeless students.
Yes, those are basically our nurse supplies. Again, something that was usually unbudgeted for, because through the year, nurses would come in and say, we need extra of this or extra of that. And we had, we had no, like, actual funding source for it. So we just want to make sure everything is clearly earmarked, known items that we've been paying for this year that hadn't been clearly budgeted for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me, move on to the next page? Which we, we, actually, we went on, we actually had both of these. So I think that we could go on to system-wide personnel, then.
Yes. So moving on to system-wide personnel and calling out the new position requests, we include here are the two drivers that we previously mentioned. We have also added an assistant director of athletics. We have staffed this position in the past, and given our size and scope, we think it best to bring it back. This past year, an audit completed by our equity officer demonstrated that we need to place greater emphasis on academics for athletes, both in and out of season, as there were some striking concerns, not only in progress reports and report cards, but also when it came to college recruitment. This position will focus on ensuring that our students find success in both athletics and academics. Also, in response to concerns brought up by community members and members of this committee, we have deemed it appropriate to add a drug prevention specialist, whose entire focus will be in this critical area. Finally, we're adding three district-wide music teachers to support our burgeoning music program. New positions on the next slide highlight a new equity manager, family liaison, four instructional coaches for math, science, social studies, and ELA, a groundskeeper, repair technician. repair technician slash handyman, as we have discussed earlier. The next slide, the new positions on the next slide highlight-
Mr. Chairman, can you just, just, are we going to do page by page, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I was just gonna, next page, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, and then go stop it there. Afterwards, it says grand total on the next page, $8 million eight after that.
So the last system-wide personnel slide highlights 10 unlicensed subpositions that we plan to deploy across schools as needed, a security supervisor, and then the 21 social workers.
Okay. Now on those pages, anybody have any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the assistant director of athletics and physical education, has this person already been hired?
No, this is a new position we're requesting for next year.
Okay. Are we going to get the job descriptions for all these new positions? We will get them, right?
Yes, we can do that.
Prior to us voting on the budget or, or after?
So that, in particular, that position existed before, so we can send you the previous job description.
Okay. But it's empty now? It's been empty for the last year?
Yes, we had to cut it my first year here when we were doing the $5 million of cuts before S R came.
Okay.
But we do have job descriptions, sorry, for all of the positions. In order to request a new position, every director or manager who leads a budget does have to put in a job description that's linked into their request if it's not something that already exists. So for example, you'll see later on that we have a student success coach position for the first time at one of the K to eight schools. Since that's a position that already exists, that's a job description that was already in existence. Whereas the equity manager, which was Ms. Jamp described earlier, as far as the key performance indicators and the job description they have, we have a job description for that.
Okay. The district-wide K through eight music teachers, are they new? Three new positions?
Yes, this was a request from Mr. O'Brien when we met with him about his department's budget.
That's great.
We had a big initiative, I think it was this, earlier this year, around buying new musical instruments. So as a result of that, obviously, we have more student participation and hence the need for more teachers.
And the drug prevention specialist, is that person, has that job been posted yet? Or is that just a new position also?
No. So, so any of the new positions that we're highlighting is only for, for next fiscal year. So none of them would be posted yet.
I'm glad to see that. That's a, that's great. I'm good with this page. I don't know if anyone had questions on this page.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thanks, Chairman. Mr. Jane, school building subs. It says number of staff FY '23 is zero and we're going to 10. So there is no current-
So we do have subs budgeted at every school. So as we go through the school budgets, you'll see that each school has at least three to four substitutes at their schools. This request is more for, for district, district-wide subs that we could deploy across schools as needed. So a lot of the, you know, the three to four subs used at schools end up being assigned to long-term leaves. So we don't really have a pool of subs that you could deploy based on like one-day P D, some stuff like that. Where you would need a classroom teacher to be pulled out of a class and have a sub assigned. So this would kind of help with that, with that.
So if a teacher calls out sick tomorrow, we can, a principal can call central administration and say, Mr. so-and-so or Mrs. so-and-so is out today, and you'll send a substitute to that building?
If, if they, if the four, three to four subs that are already assigned to their school are already tied up with long-term leaves, then yes, we could potentially use these subs for that too.
And this probably never happens. But what would happen, Madam Superintendent, if there was a day when these 10 individuals were not necessary, not needed? But I'm sure that has not happened.
Yes, based on the number of absences we've had this year as compared to the number of substitutes we've had this year, that would never happen. And also, we do have absences for not just educators, but administrative staffs, or like a school secretary. Right now, you know, everybody's been being really wonderful about, you know, just doing the best they can, people covering where they can. But it definitely, yeah, it hasn't been enough. So.
And where would these 10, where will these 10 individuals report to in the morning prior to getting sent?
So chances are, after the school year starts, they will be deployed and start at a school building. Because what we've found from the current substitutes that are already at each school, most of them have been covering long-term leaves. So they don't have sort of an extra substitute to cover somebody who's just out for a day. So once the school year starts and we have a better idea of where all of our long-term leaves are and how many substitutes we have covering those, they would most likely be starting at a school building. We're just unsure where. So kind of like the ESL coordinators that we hired district-wide last year that were on the system-wide budget, now that we've hired them because we weren't sure how many we were going to get, who, especially in this current climate as far as hiring, after we were posting and we were able to fill all of them, then we deployed them to schools. Let's say we had not filled all of them, we would have deployed them with this, to the schools that had the highest percentage of English learners. So this is sort of a similar methodology, which is that we are budgeting for them system-wide. We'll see how many we get. Then once the school year starts, we'll deploy them to schools as needed.
No, that's fine. And my only last question, Mr. Chairman, is, and Madam Superintendent, you can probably answer this quickly, which is social work. Is this going to be 21 new positions? Do you have a breakdown of, of how many will go to each building? I'm assuming this is going to be two or building or whatever the number is.
Yes. Yes, a few at each building, more at the high school. So we did it based on a ratio of students per social worker, and also making sure that each building has somebody. So we do have a breakdown of that. The number, the 21 is ambitious. We're unsure that we're going to be able to get 21 social workers. That would be a really ideal scenario. But in, in that same case, we would post, we would hire, and depending on the number that we receive, we would then adjust the ratio of students. So let's say we only get 10, we'll deploy them accordingly based on a ratio, a different ratio of students. So for example, instead of maybe having one school, each school have one, we may have to, in that case where we only, let's say, we could only hire 10, we might have two at the high school and one that's shared amongst three different schools. It's not ideal, but.
Thank you.
Mr. Marcus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'd address this to you first about the janitors. I was reading something, maybe it was regarding, are we going to be trying to put them outside to work? You know, on, outside, the janitors. Were we, are we planning on putting them outside, doing outside lawn work and stuff like that?
So do you, currently, right now, we have, so our custodians are really wonderful about, you know, doing all kinds of things in our schools. But no, we don't have any plan to have them, unless I'm incorrect. Yeah, I'm not sure what you would have heard. Sorry. So there's no like plan to have them doing-
You hired a ground, you're hiring a groundskeeper?
Yes.
That person. But private companies, that's, you know, that Merry Christmas, Crimson Tide, all that stuff outside here?
Correct. So the groundskeeper would be the one who would be handling the outside, the external. It wouldn't be the custodians. It would be the groundskeeper that we're hiring, plus our current contractor.
A just for whole system, one person?
Correct. I mean, we would still have our contractor, but yeah. I mean, over the course of 10 days, you could get to every school. Not every school is also owned by us or has, you know, significant landscaping needs.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing none, if we can move on to the Adams School.
So as we dive into the individual school budgets, I would like to highlight the non-personnel budgets we have allocated to each school. So in each, in these budgets, each school was given $75 a student for supplies. And all these numbers, the per-student numbers are based on the projected FY '24 enrollment. So $75 per student for supplies, $50 per student for a textbook and curriculum line, $20,000 per school for professional development opportunities for staff, funding to supplement field trips, which we have since doubled since last year's field trip line, and a separate line item for copy paper and toners since printing is a big cost factor for schools. These are all funds that we have pumped up from our FY '23 allocations. Moving to the Adams personnel, we're budgeting for one new position there. It's a special education teacher. In order to be in compliance, we needed to add one teacher there.
Ms. Sani?
I just had one question. Printers and stuff like that, do each school have their own printers?
Yes.
Now, they, and they all have to share? So we, they can't get one in each room or anything like that because there's too much network?
It's not one in each room, but we did add color copiers to every school. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we, we can get you that.
I don't either. I just, I was just wondering if each school had their own in each room or how it worked with the, you know?
Yeah, yes. They may be located at different places in each school. I can, I can get that as well. But we did add color copiers to every school as well this last year.
That's okay. Thank you.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So this is not in, only for the Adams School? It's kind of all of them. But one of the questions I had was, can we allocate the field trip money per student? So, and each school, you know, has a certain amount, but each school is certainly not the same population size. It can vary significantly. And I do believe, and we heard from students even last year, how much field trips and external enrichment helps support their in-classroom learning. So that was just my question, if we could look at it by a per pupil versus kind of a bucket given to each of the schools?
Yes, absolutely. We can look at that and see what the, the difference is. Because we did double the amount that we gave each school this year. Because last year, when we piloted it, two years back, I think, or last year, it was really to supplement what the P T O was paying for with field trips. And really, now we did want to add to that. And so it's really mainly fully funded by us. So we have doubled the amount. But I, on a per-student allocation, we can definitely look at what that looks like and compare to what we've actually given the schools.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. If there are no more questions from the Adams, we'll move on to the Webster Extension.
So as with the Adams, the same methodology applies here with regard to the non-personal allocations. We provided the Webster Extension. The new positions we're including at the WebEx are three, a three-year pre-K teacher for an inclusion classroom, a school building sub to cover anticipated leaves, and one special ed teacher for the inclusion classroom. The big change with the Devens that you'll see is that we have not included the Devens lease costs, since those are funds the city will need to provide us over net school spending. And the conversation around the Devens space is ongoing. The new position request at the Devens is a B C B A. So we may have a dedicated staff member at that school in order to stay in compliance. The, at the English, the line item that stands out here refers back to Slide 10, where we had talked about where the budgets and positions previously on the specialist and technology teacher lines are now re-coded to match the DESI codes. So they are now in the classroom slash specialist teacher line. Hence, you'll see a zero next to them for the, for next year's budget.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting, Ms. John. Does anybody have any questions on those last week's schools, Webster, Devens, or English? Seeing none. All right, continue on to the Caverian, please.
The English personnel slide, the new positions here are two paraprofessionals and a school building sub. At the Caverian, the same line items that stand out here refers back to Slide 10, where the budget and positions previously on the specialist and technology teacher lines are now re-coded to match the DESI codes. The new positions-
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. The, the funds for field trips, is that just for the buses? Or is that for children's admissions to?
We've, we've, we've left it open to however the school leader would like to use it. It couldn't, it could be a field trip, so the bus cost and an entrance fee. Or it could be bringing somebody into the school. So especially for the younger, the pre-K schools, rather than them going out on a field trip, they like to bring in, I had the name of a partner in mind.
Like a muppet, like a show or something?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Right. Kind of what School Committeewoman Lambert said, you know, I look at the, with English, for instance, $27,000. I mean, is that enough for kids to go on field trips? I mean, is that, should we look into, is, is there a way we can increase that so we can give our kids better opportunities to go different places, maybe?
We certainly can. And that's why we, we did double it this year. But I think it's also a conversation with each school leader to see what are the kind of opportunities that we can reach out to. Because school leaders are definitely, we're open to them reaching out to mid-year if we say, oh, you know, this is a field trip I'm looking at, but it's way more than my budget will cover. We definitely revisit that as needed.
Would you have some funds, some discretionary funds to do that? Or, because I'm sure like your entire budget being, what's the word, all your funds are being properly displayed in different line items. Is there any discretionary funds for?
A budget, yeah. A budget is always a plan. So there are things that get, things that get amended through the year. So yes, absolutely. Like somewhere where a school leader may want more funds for a field trip, at the same time, somewhere else, we may find out that a software license doesn't cost as much as we had budgeted for. So we always could have something we could move around.
Thank you. I'd be an advocate for more field trips for these kids, especially if they're learning opportunities.
On to the, I guess, the Lafayette then.
I think we missed the Caverian personnel slide.
I thought, I'm sorry. I thought you went over there. I apologize.
So the Caverian, the new positions here are a B C B A and a success coach. The success coach is a pilot initiative. This was a budget request from the principal, and we have had success at the high school. So this is a great way to pilot it at the elementary level as well. The Lafayette budget follows the same methodology as the other school budget.
I have a question on, also on the B C B A. And I don't see it here on the, at the Lafayette. Because you already, I know you have somebody at the Lafayette that, but the Caverian, was there a, a need for that specifically down at that school? Is that that person going to be like the other ones utilized throughout the system?
The B C B A at the Caverian? I could have Mr. Norman come up if he wants to talk about what, because this was a position-
Either him or Mr. Donahue, whoever. I'm just, because I know we had, I had talked to Mr. Donahue in the past. We had two- We have a motion by Ms. Lambert, seconded by Mr. McLaughlin, being Mr. Donahue forward. All those in favor? All those opposed? There's had Mr. Donahue. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
So I, I just, before you start, I apologize for interrupting. I know we had talked a few months ago, and you did talk about needing additional B C B As, whatever. And so this particular position here, is this person going to be like Florida, or will they just be central to the Caverian school?
No, it'll probably be, if we get, the staff that we have for next year, will probably be two schools per B C B A.
Okay. That's the only question I had.
In the Lafayette, the, a line item for the Lafayette, that's under my 240 grant.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Ms. Cristiano?
Hi. With respect to the success coach, what does, what does a success coach do? Madam Superintendent?
So right now, we only have them at the high school. And currently, what they do is they support the students as far as they work with the teachers, the deans, to determine if there are students who need specific extra support. So it was basically, our goal in creating the success coaches was to, rather than simply having hall monitors, was to have adults whose goal and whose job description was about not being punitive and about just getting students to class, but about building relationships with students, working with guidance counselors, teachers, deans, to determine what a student may need, to determine what student may have a circumstance that requires extra attention. So the goal was to basically elevate a hall monitor position to be more about, more about not just pushing students into class, but more about ensuring the success of the students, whatever, in whatever form that may be.
That's great.
That's great.
Mr. McGoffin.
Thanks, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've seen this throughout a couple of the schools that we have reviewed. But, so I'm just looking for a clarification, simply. As an example, and I'm not going to pick out this one, but Lafayette special ed teachers, 25 positions last year, 25 positions this year. But there is a increase of $200,000 or so, but the same number of teachers.
Those are salary increases?
Okay.
As per the union contracts?
Yep. Okay. Okay, that's it.
Any other questions on Mr. Donahue or the Kavarian school at all?
Excuse Mr. Donahue with the customary thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt. We can move on to the Lafayette school budget page.
The Lafayette school personnel page. So the new positions included here are part of the principal's request, which is for an EL teacher, a math interventionist, and two specialists, one which would be used for creative writing. The Parlin budget, again, follows the same methodology. The new positions being included at the Parlin are two interventionists to cover 7th and 8th graders and one school building sub. The Whittier budget, again, follows the same methodology. And the new position request for the Whittier is for one paraprofessional.
Any questions from the members on those last couple of pages? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a few of these, and looking at the success coach, the creative writing specialist, which I'm very, very, very excited about. How are we going to measure that to determine if that's something we should scale system-wide in the future? I don't know if that's for you or for the superintendent.
Well, first, we try to see if we can find those positions. So, for example, one year, we funded several world language teachers, and we were unable, so scaling. You know, we had to kind of be a little bit more creative. And I think that's where our school leaders have started to, so that's why you'll see one request at one school and another. Where our school leaders, we'd like to give them the autonomy to kind of look at what their school, look at, you know, the specialties that they have, look at the student need and the student interest, and sort of try new things. So this is, so that's why at one school, you may see a student success coach. And here at another school, we see a creative writing teacher. So it would be wonderful if we got, you know, several applicants for that. And certainly, the school leaders share best practices throughout the year. And I can imagine if the student success coach, for example, is successful at the Kavarian, then it may be something that's requested by other principals in following years. But we do like to make sure we're at least having that conversation in consultation with the principal. So there have been some, for example, like the interventionists, that multiple schools were asking for. So then we decide to do it district-wide. And there are others where we kind of take a year to sort of see how it's going, to see what the popularity of it is, and see if it's something that other principals would like to scale.
I'd be interested, and I know this all costs money, but I'd be interested in kind of following these students. You know, if they have a creative writing specialist in the middle school grades and their MCAS, EL, A scores are higher, then that tells us something, right? So I would, I'd be interested as we kind of do these. And I don't know if there's a way to track it without a significant investment, but to kind of watch these students, like with the success coach, are they more prepared as they transition to the high school? Like what successes are we seeing? You know, I think in the past, we've seen some schools have a higher representation in STEM when they get to the high school because of different offerings in the K through 8s. So I just think it would be interesting and could inform future budgets even better. Just a thought, as I kind of saw the one-offs, I apologize.
So actually, that's a great suggestion. We had mentioned in the equity manager position that one of the main functions of that position was key performance indicators. And that's exactly what we're trying to build in, is some measurable data points where we can determine success for these new positions for sure, but also for other programs that we have. So we want to build out a system of key performance indicators that we keep track of over time so that we can determine in a more scientific way, what are the programs we really need to be focusing on?
And I know it's been difficult because we do have a transitory student body, right? So it's not always easy, but if you get at least a core sample and you can kind of follow them through the years, and it tells its own story. So, you know, I'd certainly be interested in that.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Mr. Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask you something during, like we're doing a Parlin now, and I'm thinking of it, how, you know, I guess how crowded it is. And we didn't put any extra money in in case we got modulars or some?
So we actually did, and I think later on in the slideshow, we revisit that. So we will talk about that line item shortly, money that we've put aside.
So we do have money put aside for rental space. As far as actually purchasing modulars, I know that that is, that's something that we would be working with the city on. So in order to make sure we're meeting our net school spending requirement, we can't, there are certain things that we can't spend money on. Otherwise, it doesn't count towards our net school spending. And one of those things is capital purchases. So we did put aside money for potential leases in case that was something we decided to consider. But as far as purchasing the modulars, that would be an expense that I believe the city would have to provide.
Are we still trying to do this? I don't see anything in the budget that says, you know, we're trying, okay, we'll let it go to later. But I want to make sure we.
But to be very honest, you're not going to see a huge cost that will cover expenses for all of the modulars around the district. I believe we're going to be, the city is putting forward a plan as far as funding those. And that would be a capital expense that the city puts forward along with their plan.
Okay.
So kind of like if we were purchasing a school, you wouldn't find it in this budget. It would be in the city budget.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. I just, before we move on to the next school, I just want to say from me, I'm sure on behalf of all the members, we don't always have the principals and assistant principals here in front of us all the time. I just want to say thank you for the job that you do on a daily basis. You wear many hats, and, you know, there's so many different obstacles here in Everett that you battle here on a daily basis. So I appreciate every single one of you, what you all do. And like I said, in this day and age with social media and everything else that goes on, that wasn't even a thought a couple of years ago. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart because, you know, it's a tough job to do it every single day. And I applaud yous all. So thank you very much.
And the directors as well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, exactly right, the directors. And like I said, it just, even up to the administration, it's just, you know, it's a team effort. And, you know, you don't always agree all the time. But there's no doubt in my mind that every single day, when you're all going to work, you have the best interests of our children at hand. And like I said, I just, yeah, I can't thank yous enough because it is a tough and thankless job sometimes. So thank you to everybody. Ms. Johnout, on to the next one.
So now we move on to the Webster budget, which again, follows the same methodology in the budget. On the personnel side, the Webster K through 5 was the only elementary school without an assistant principal or head teacher. So for FY '24, a new head teacher has been included in the budget. Moving on to the high school. The line item to highlight here is the $1.9 million for an attendance initiative. This was a proposal we received from one of our staff managers, who has been thinking outside the box when it comes to both increasing attendance and addressing our growing poverty concerns. Since the pandemic, we have seen an increase in our chronic absenteeism rate, which we believe is tied directly to our growing poverty rate. The goal of this initiative would be to pilot an incentive program at the high school level that awards daily attendance with money placed into a personal bank account for each student. These accounts would have guardrails around how the money could be spent and would mostly focus on schooling expenses, whether those be senior trips, yearbooks, apparel, and eventually, college tuition and books. We have been in conversation with a few banks, who may even be interested in some fund matching, meaning that they would provide dollars over and above those that we would place into the student bank account. Obviously, this is an unconventional idea and practice, and we're very interested in hearing this body's reaction to it. Thus far, we have had a positive response from school leaders at the high school, a few banks, and other stakeholders who are interested to see how a program like this could fare. This would be a pilot in its truest sense, meaning that if it were unsuccessful, we would not, we wouldn't continue this initiative. But if it does garner the positive results, we think that it could, it could be a model for the state.
Ms. Lambert.
I love it. And I love it, and I, you know, going back to the, what I mentioned with curriculum with the financial literacy, I think it's a huge tieback. I think working within the bank, going back to the center school, that was my first bank account in school. But having students not only rewarded for their attendance, because sometimes it's just getting in the building. And then the folks in the building work their magic, as long as we can get bodies in the building. And it's very similar to when you go into your career, when you go into higher education, you're rewarded for your time. And it's also an investment in the future. So I applaud, I applaud, you know, the efforts to go outside of the box. And I think, you know, as communities around us have looked at universal basic income, the studies have all shown very positive results. And I'd be excited to see what this will do for our students. Thank you.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Ms. Lambert, this seems terrific. And reminds me of a program that currently exists with the state, which, not specifically on this, but the treasurer's office has a program that it matches $50 once your kid, so once you give birth, in fact, the treasurer's office recently worked with the Secretary of State to change that, to work with hospitals to offer that as soon as you have a baby. So you sign up, and the state matches $50 if you put $50 towards that, your kid, college. So, and that goes all the way until your kid goes to college. So by the time, if you, if you as a parent match that, and the state matched the other 50, by the time that you, perhaps that you graduate, you have a good chunk of money to put towards college. It's been very successful. The treasurer actually presented that to all the states across the country. And I would, of course, I'm not saying that it's equal to this, but something like this, that match in order to give incentive to something, has been proven to be successful. So I'm very excited about this, and hopefully, it will be, it will be successful. The one that the state has regarding college, this one that I just mentioned, has been a tremendous success.
I'll just say from the chair that I think this is absolutely fabulous, whoever came up with the idea. But for the administration to implement this, I think it's wonderful. I think it helps everybody. I think it helps the parents. I think it helps the students and certainly the teachers. Because if you have certain kids, that this motivates them to get to school every day. And that the teacher isn't playing catch-up with certain students and so forth. I think, I just think this is absolutely wonderful. So applause to everybody that put this together. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, do you have like the parameters yet for it or?
No, so this is in its infancy stage. So we, the first step we wanted to do was make sure we had, we could speak to some banks and see if we can get a partnership going. But we definitely will flesh this out further. We wanted to make sure it's something that this body thinks is a good idea. And again, it's a pilot initiative, but we will definitely be fleshing it out further and have guardrails around what we're doing, how much we're giving per month, per week, based on, you know, what data, attendance, retention, test scores, like whatever we want to put in there is what the incentives are.
So I see as, so it's a placeholder for now, but would we have the opportunity to agree to the parameters then to be able to spend this money, or how does that work? I mean, once we approve?
Sorry, yeah, we can definitely do that. We can flesh it out further and bring back a proposal that the body could vote on later.
I'm curious to see, I mean, I love ideas that thinking out of the box. And so I'm just kind of curious to see how it would work and, you know, and curious to see if it would be successful too. So, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Sani.
Thank you. I do agree this is a good program. I believe it's something like we'd probably put it in trust, and we give it to the student once they graduate. Is that how something would be looking into? So this way, it's not something that they would just go in and take money out whenever they want. It's money that they will look forward to for college or move forward in their life or career path or?
So, yes, so we could do that. We could put that in as a guardian, say, these are funds that are going towards your college tuition. We were giving it a little more flexibly when we were thinking through this and saying, you know, maybe they could use it for high school expenses. So we could put whatever guardrails we want, but we were thinking you could use this to pay for your yearbook or pay for graduation expenses.
Yeah, we put some criterias in there, and then we'd be in trust for it, and that they can't just go in and take it out. We'd have to have someone manage it and monitor the funds.
We could, yeah, it would be whatever we can decide on with the bank, if we're going into partnership with that, with the bank.
Okay, thank you.
Another, we weren't sure how the body would react to this, so I'm excited that there is a positive response. We do feel like there's a lot of different ways, and we'd be interested in your suggestions too, on creating sort of a map of the things that students can spend the funds on. And we're hoping that somebody at the bank will help to manage sort of like how, operationalize how that would work as far as taking out the money and what that would look like as a liaison between us and the bank. But one of the things we were also thinking about is how we can utilize these funds or how students could potentially utilize these funds to then enact some of the principles that they're learning in their financial literacy course. So I know we have a student, for example, who is, who has, who took financial literacy, one of the Saturday classes, and had tremendous success with it, and has been able to raise the amount of funds that they have through investing and things like that. And one of the things that we think may be an incentive to having students attend financial literacy or want to learn more about it is if they actually have a bank account where they can use funds to try out those skills. So that was another thing there, we were thinking about different ways we can even be creative with these funds to really teach our students how to manage money moving forward.
Or even paying the fees, because she took her, on her birthday, she took the state license exam and passed on her 18th birthday. So, you know, kudos to her, but that does cost money. So, you know, investing in personal learning as well, I think. I think it's worth a lot more conversation, but I think it's fantastic. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's all right. Just don't do it again. Any other questions in Everett High School? Ms. Cardello. That's fine.
Thank you. It's amazing, and my head's just twirling about here, thinking of a million different questions. And this isn't the time to bring them up. But what a great incentive program this is. So I know, you said it's in the infancy stage. I'm already at, you know, year three in my head. But I think it's just like, wow, this is a big wow. And I think if, you know, you know, we've been frontrunners before as far as EPR, so I wouldn't doubt that we would make this a success. And, you know, it's, there's a lot to it. There's a lot to it because I'm thinking, you know, how we have a scholarship program, and sometimes people don't know where to put the money, and they might want to divvy it up, giving it to a recipient, but also putting it in a fund like that to help kids for their future. It's a great thing. So thank you for working on this. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Excellent.
Any other questions related, or Mr. Marcus, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank you on just putting all this together. It really was a good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regard to Everett High School, any questions? I didn't realize there's a few more slides, so Ms. Johnout, I'm sorry, continue. I didn't realize there's a few more slides, so Ms. Johnout, I'm sorry, continue with it.
So, the next slide continues with the Everett High School budget. And then the last slide on the Everett, on the high school budget, again, just one-line item to highlight is the technology math line. This is a significant increase because the school's looking to redesign the current computer lab to align to 21st century learning. Moving on to the person, high school personnel, there are a couple of slides, so this particular slide, the new positions at the high school that you see here are CTE teacher, we're looking at like a baking specialty between, within culinary, an early college specialist, and an elective teacher for a dance program. On the next slide, the new positions you see here are a student activity manager and a paraprofessional for the CTE program. So this total adds up to a total of 236 positions at our high school.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin.
Through you, through, through a new, so we're adding one position in culinary that doesn't exist today?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anytime we can add those types of positions is really important for our students, and culinary arts is one of those highlights of our school system that always shines and makes our city proud. And I've seen it firsthand, just as late as last week on Friday, when we saw the students participate in a, in an event, and professionalism that they bring in, and the dedication that they bring to this program, invested in these types of positions is really exciting. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Stein, you might have already explained this, but can you just, the managerial staff, school-based managerial staff, you might even said it, it went from 80 to 591, that new positions? No, what was that?
I'm sorry, which, which slide are you talking about, Mr. Mayor?
It's on, I don't know, Everett High, 9212, budget continued, it's, just says, school-based managerial, EHS managerial staff. I gotta wear these crazy glasses, because I can't see anything. It went from 80,000 to 591, 591,000. Did you already explain that?
Oh, no, no, so, a lot of these new positions are also managerial positions. So we have like a testing coordinator, intern liaisons are part of that budget line, so I can give you a breakdown of what is included there, but like the student engagement specialist that we just talked about, the student activity specialist, I think it's called, is another one that's a new position that we're adding for next year. So these are all, we call them EHS managerial staff, because they're not, none of those were union positions.
Okay, so, okay, they're all, but are they all new positions this year?
Some of, most of them, yes. Yes, other than the, like, the CT teacher obviously is not, and then I think there was one other that's a union position, the dance teacher.
I'm sorry. Are they in the budget, or are they just all right there?
No, they'll be in the budget. So this is the budget, so, yeah, it's in the budget, but then also when you go to the personnel slide, it's broken out by actual position.
Okay, all right. In the, in CTE, you're hiring a baker? Is that a baking position?
That's the hope, yes.
What does that pay? Because I might be thinking about, you know, taking that job.
Depends on where you fall on the teacher's scale.
Yeah, I'll take a DMHs, or whatever. Okay, thank you. That's great.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The early college specialist, that was one that was funded through ESER prior?
No, so this would be a new position that we're asking, yeah.
And so in, perhaps, let me see the job description, because I know that early college has been just a phenomenal success, but also within the CTE field, it's also helped supplement some students that are between like, am I going into a trade, or do I want to explore more college level? And they've been able to do that through the early college specialist, and I was just curious if, if one was actually enough. I know that's a lot of coordination among 2,400 students. So, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. You can continue.
So, moving to, I think we're on the special education non-personnel budget. So as you may know, there is a significant increase in out-of-district tuition with an estimated 14% increase in private school tuition, so that accounts in large part for that increase you see on the special ed tuition line. The special education supplies line is to pay for Learn Well licenses that are assigned to home and hospital students, and is charged by the hour. So we usually have about 100 to 150 students a year that we pay for with that. This was previously charged to the IDA grant, but that's why you'd see it as a, as a new item here. The special education personnel budget reflects our, our special ed personnel. This year, we are also highlighting our security budget, since this is a district priority and one we're fully invested in. So one line item to highlight here is for the security guards. We had previously budgeted for security guards at the high school. Moving forward, we'd like to have them deployed at all the K through eight schools during the day, and for after-school and summer school programming. And then a lot of the other line items we went through based on the priorities Ms. O'Connor had put in, in our budget meeting with her. Moving to the facilities maintenance, the maintenance non-personnel budget is 5.8% of our, our full budget. It includes items that are considerable but necessary. We spoke about the increases to the cleaning contract line earlier. The landscaping line, which we mentioned, too, goes down since we need less funding to contract it out as we plan to hire a groundskeeper. The facilities non-personnel budget continued. On this slide, you'll see a major addition of funds earmarked for school space. As mentioned previously by the superintendent, we have been exploring the possibility of renting space in the city. At the same time that we await plans and next steps on the modular units from the city, we're also doing our best to explore any other avenues that might be available to us, hence that $3 million line item. The next slide highlights our facilities personnel. So please let me know if you have any other questions, and before I end, I just wanted to give a shout-out, not, not only to all the amazing principals, department heads, and everyone who's collaborated with us on this fantastic budget, including our deputy superintendent, assistant superintendent, but my amazing team. I just want to highlight Shirley and Chris, who are here today, and who've just been crunching numbers for months, and have been amazing. And with that, I will hand it back to the superintendent to close our budget presentation out.
Thank you. Can we, unless anybody has any questions of the assistant superintendent slash CFO?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, have a question.
The, the security guards, so, so, right now, we just, it's 100,000, is that covering the costs for the guards here at the high school?
Yes, that's, that's the current budget for what we cover.
And then the 424 is for the guards to work at the...
That's the projected cost to increase, expand it to all our schools.
So I know they're at the door when we come in here at night, but maybe, question for Lauren, but it, so, during the day, are they out of their seats, and are they, what do they, you know, maybe?
Make a motion to invite Ms. Lauren O'Connor.
We have a motion by Ms. Christiano, seconded by Ms. Lambert.
Good evening.
All in favor? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All opposed, Ms. O'Connor forward. All, thank you, I apologize for interrupting.
Good evening. To answer that question, at the high school right now, they have one that sits in the command center, and they watch the cameras and call on the radio. The other two is at the back door. They sit at the doors and the front door, they sit there, but once classes are in session, if they're moving around in the hallways, they stand up, they engage, make sure your hoods are off, IDs on. But no, they are, they are stagnant, they do not roam the halls, that's what we have our success coaches for at the high school. For the K through eights, there'll be mainly access control when they first come in the building at the front door, they'll have a desk there, and try and get some visitor management systems for them to use for checking in visitors and guests and everyone.
Crazy question, but they're unarmed, right?
Yes, unarmed.
So, at the, at the middle schools, when someone comes in after school, the door is locked, they would be the ones to unlock, or is it still the...
So, we budgeted this for them to be at the K through eights from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They will only be at the high school for after-hours.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none, your excuse would accustom every thanks, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you.
Just a comment for a new...
Oh, yes.
Before you excuse me, no?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I'm, I'm not the landscaping contractor, I'm not trying to support the person that does the contract now at all, okay? Just caution that sometimes when we think we can take things on, just from experience, like, we can, we can do it with our own city employees that we hire, and we think we can do it in-house. I'm all for making sure lots of other companies bid on contracts, and make sure we get apples for apples, which I've seen through, we've always had issues with. Make sure, you know, what you're specing out, you're getting them to bid appropriately, you know, for the, you know, a lot of money that we spend on this stuff. But just caution that when you try to bring someone in-house to, to take it over and to, to reduce it, it's daunting, especially with, you know, landscaping, you really, we have like a team that we're kind of, really make sure that we get what we pay for, and, you know, document from every flower we buy, to every tree we have planted, to exactly amount of times, you know, cleanups and cuts and all that stuff. And then when you try to bring it in-house and do it, sometimes it doesn't get done as well as you think you might get it done, because the investment in the equipment is also a lot, too. So, I applaud that you're trying to, you, one thing about our schools from the prior administration, that, you know, the landscaping was always, you know, impeccable when it's done, so, but other than that, kudos to the team.
And you said, so in, in the budget, I, I know we just got this, so probably had it for about three or four days, in here, there is more detail when it comes to like the salaries and all that stuff, right?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, if we, we have no other questions of Ms. Johnout, I, thanks, thank you for all you've done, and great presentation, you and your team, thank you so much, your excuse, thank you.
Thank you.
We have the matter before us, I don't know if, oh, I'm sorry, again, Superintendent.
So, sorry, just to close out, I wanted to thank Ms. Jay Anthony and her team, and all the school leaders and department heads, directors, for all of the work that went into this budget. I thank you for your questions and your input this evening, and of course, we do continue budget discussions next week, and for as many budget meetings we need to have in order to go through, because, yes, this was the overview budget, but what you have in the binders is actually every single line. You can please feel free to email us any questions that you may have, and just like we've done in former years, if we get a question, we'll answer it, and then we'll also put it in presentation form for the following meeting, in case, because generally, that means somebody else has that same question, and we also want to be transparent, too, with any questions that we receive, so that we can provide that answer publicly as well. I did want to just be honest, that I, you, you saw a lot of very creative and great ideas in this budget, and then there were some, you know, things that perhaps we would not have placed in the budget, but I did want to be clear that space constraints did thwart many of the things that we would have liked to have put in this budget. So, our school leaders, directors, department heads had to continually refrain from asking for more teachers, direct service providers, just because we do not have anywhere to put them. So when it comes to space, the, the school district is at a critical point, and there were definitely areas where, I think, you may have seen one specialty teacher, when we would have loved to have, you know, asked for several, but we just don't have the space for it. And so I just wanted to bring up the fact that there are certain programs that we would love to explore in the future. I know CTE, additional CTE programs have been brought up here, but also, you know, spacing does impact many of the programs and services that we provide, including therapeutic services, IEP services, ABA programs. One of the things that we really wanted to consider this year, and we tried at the behest of many teachers, but it just wasn't possible, was full-day pre-K, universal pre-K. And so I just wanted to be honest that I, that this is the very best reflection, I think, of our current thinking under our current circumstances, but I do want to be honest, that I think there's more and exciting new things that we can and should be doing here in the future, when space does allow. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Well, before we do that, we have to make a recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Fable action. On the motion.
So we have a motion by Ms. Christiano, seconded by Mr. McLaughlin, fable action...
On the motion. The mayor did.
What? Oh, the mayor did, I'm sorry, I thought it was... Seconded by Mayor Di Maria, I apologize, Ms. Lambert, the floor is yours.
On the motion, I just wanted to ask that the questions and amendments that may come before us are presented as part of our next meeting, when we have the full readout, and ahead of the public hearing, so that we can inform the public about maybe some of the changes.
All right, so the recommendation would be refer this out to the regular body to, as, as the budget has submitted?
With potential amendments and follow-ups.
Okay.
On the motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. McLaughlin.
So by supporting Ms. Christiano's motion this evening, we are affirmative in the approval of this budget, or we have an opportunity to come back and discuss it?
So, as Ms. Lambert just pointed out, that, so basically, we're just referring this out, and then there may be some, in case people want to tweak things, or ask for certain things that to consider, additional, maybe cuts, or add things in, so forth. So it's just, there's no, I think, would just be to refer to the...
Should it not be referred to a committee of the whole committee?
You could do that, if you wanted to, but, or you could just refer it out and take it at the regular meeting, the regular meeting. And then those particular, if there was, you know, certainly, a couple of things that maybe people wanted to change, they would get in touch with the superintendent or the budget director, and those things would be, would it be addressed at a current meeting? And then, and then at that point, we could...
As long as we have an opportunity to discuss this at our next meeting, that, that's fine with me, I support that.
As a point of order, too, the budget's never completed until we have a public hearing, so we do have to have a public hearing before anything's finalized.
Correct, which we do have, which we do have early on, on Monday anyways.
And I think just, oh, this Monday?
Yes, that's why.
Yeah, we want this opportunity once.
No.
Okay, and so I think it's good, on the motion, would we be able to ask our communications director to maybe just put something on the website for the timeline, just so people understand, because I do think it gets confusing about how we have a budget committee of the whole, goes to public hearing, then goes to our full committee, and then goes to city council, and so, maybe just a timeline, I know we had one in the past, maybe just reflective of now, that we could put on the website. I, I just want full transparency for anybody that has questions, and I know students heard budget, and, you know, just last night, we're sending things, so I just want them to understand that this is kind of an established process, but it's a never-ending process, so keep sending things, because we don't, budget season never ends.
Okay, so then, then the motion, just be to refer this to our regular meeting, and we can address any questions or concerns, and do final approval then, if needed, at a regular meeting. All those in favor? Actually, I'll take a roll call vote on that, Mr. O'Connor.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Christiano.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Chairman Mangan.
Yes.
Eight in affirmative, no negative.
You've passed eight to zero.
How you getting along?
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, and seconded by Mr. McLaughlin to adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all.
Bye, everybody.